All right, I'd like to call our regular board meeting to order. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Martin, please call the roll.
Mirevka.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Sluse.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
All right, so trustee Sluse and trustee Ham, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
And I can hear you fine. So other trustees, you can hear everybody?
Yes.
All right.
And we have two more callers on the line. Can they identify themselves for me?
Troy, Troy Volbodil Dr. Dairs here.
Okay.
Troy who?
And Tracy with all ones.
Hi, Tracy.
Hello.
Thank you.
All right, in your packets were the minutes from our November 23rd, 2020 regular board meeting. Are there any additions or corrections?
I had one.
Go ahead.
I was, I was, I was at present and I was not. But then it later says in the second paragraph that I was not present.
I'll fix it.
And let's see.
It sounded like Ham, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. There's a typo down on Aqua update. The permit from CN Railroad has been approved, been received. Right under public comment. All right, if there's no other additions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as corrected.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Mirevka.
Jones.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yeah.
Bowden.
Present.
And next in your packets are accounts payable and payroll. We have pay period ending 11/28/20 for $47,580.27. And a pay period ending 12/320 for $20,531.60. In our accounts payable, our general fund was $37,590.37. Motor fuel tax fund, $3,150. Capital improvement fund, $7,691.72 for a total of $48,432.09. Are there any questions on any of the bills?
I had one on sounds cool live audio.
That's the, yeah. Any other questions?
How about the artistic engraving?
So those were, that's the.
Badges.
Badges, so Chief, are you on the line there? Bill?
He's just unmuted.
So those were commemorative badges that Chief had made up for Gary Bogart's family.
Oh, okay. Got it.
All right, if there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Parker.
Bowden.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Ham.
Yeah.
All right. Next, we have public comments. I know Tracy from Aqua is on the line. Tracy, you want to give us an update?
Yeah, hi, everyone.
Hello.
About the only update that I have today is that the railroad crossing water main installation is not going to happen this year. We are tentatively scheduled to start the week of January 4th. This is really just due to scheduling conflict with the railroad. So, you know, again, that's a tentative date and once we get closer to it, we will know more.
Any trustees?
That's all I've got.
Okay, any trustees have questions?
Will we have to get more approval for the railroad?
No.
Because we're pushing it back.
It was their conflict, so they had an outbreak of COVID with their guys, so they didn't have the manpower to man the crossing while they were doing it. So they requested it be moved back. And so, so Corning is going to be closed for traffic for a period of up to about 10 days while they get that done.
We had the sign company join us and the media. So we have two other callers on the line. Can you identify yourself?
Hi, Amy, it's Angie from Aqua.
Hey, Angie.
Hi.
And anybody else? I'm sure.
Angie, do you have any other comments you want to make?
I, I don't have anything to add to what Tracy said, no, I don't.
Okay.
Is there any update on the new water service?
So we had a meeting with Jim Balata and Angie and Tracy last Friday, Thursday, I believe.
Yeah, that sounds right.
And they gave us a kind of a full rundown of what's going on with the testing. They're, they're wrapping up the testing. They're exceeding what I E P A requirements are as far as, you know, the water quality. And they're going to be submitting the final results to the I E P A. And they, the I E P A has up to six months to respond. And their concern is that the I E P A has been kind of moving the goalposts on them. And so, but they, they have wrapped up that part. The actual physical mains are in place, so they just would have to install some valves and turn it on when they get the okay. So we're probably looking at maybe summertime. Did I say that right, Tracy?
Yeah, that, that's pretty much correct. You know, I E P A has up, up to six months to review everything and get back to us. They, they can wait, you know, they can have additional requests in five months. You know, nothing says that this storm switch will take place in six months. It just gives them ample time to review everything. We still do need to make the interconnection and we will not do that without the approval of I E P A.
All right, is there any other public comment? If not, we will move on to reports of committees. The A O C committee had a meeting last week.
Yeah, we got together last week. We kind of continued, we definitely continued our 21, 22 budget working sessions. Still working on improving the, the financial state of the village. One of the things that the staff's working on is kind of reviewing the, the dental and the medical insurance for, for the employees. We hammered out a new budget schedule. We're kind of going to work, start working on it earlier than normal and make sure it's all put to bed well in advance of the end of the fourth quarter for the villages cycle. We talked about the village investments and unfortunately, a lot of the investments are not making a lot of money just due to interest rates being so low, which was, I guess, an unintended consequence of the COVID. And then also, we kind of, we started talking about some of our liquor, some of our liquor license updates and liquor license fees and, you know, issuing new licenses or new classifications and stuff, so, but nothing, nothing that we acted on. Nope. And we've got another meeting first, second week of December, of January.
Amy, do you have the date of the capital projects meeting so the other trustees are aware of that?
I'll have to email it to them, I think, I don't.
So if you recall, the years past, we've had a meeting with the staff on long-term capital improvements. Usually that was done on a Saturday morning, but we're going to switch it to a, I believe it's a Wednesday evening instead.
Anyway, we've got something scheduled January 6th.
No, that's our.
That's the regular A O C meeting?
A O C meeting.
Okay.
I think it's in February sometime. Anyway, so keep an eye out for that, so, you know, set that date aside, because we'd like everybody to attend that. All right, Bob, do you want to give a public works?
Sure.
Report.
Yeah, the department continues to move from the old facility to the new facility. Setting up, getting it all set up, obviously, out there. The other thing I have is the Corning Avenue project, you probably noticed some temporary striping. The permanent striping will be done in the spring. It'll be thermoplastic and that's what I have.
Okay. And just so the trustees know, you did hire a temporary employee to help you out with the.
Correct.
Winter projects. His name is David Baker.
Yep, I was going to add that too, I guess.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
And then just to remind the residents, when it snows more than two inches, no parking until it's plowed, right?
Correct, curb to curb, correct.
Okay. All right, perfect.
Can I just make a reminder to, if you're calling in and you're not speaking, can you please mute yourself so that there's no feedback for us?
All right, moving on, we have no old business, new business. We have a proposal from the Chief to hire Joshua Malloy as a full-time police officer. He is currently employed as a police officer in Moments. We don't have a specific hiring date for him. Chief has talked to the police chief over their Moments and they're going to give him a little bit of time. I don't know if you saw in the paper, but Moments lost a police officer recently in an accident. And so hoping sometime in January kind of coincide with when school opens back up so we can get our school resource officer back into schools. Anything to add there, Bill? Are you muted there? Anything to add, Bill? All right.
He's trying, but.
Yeah. All right, well, any questions from the board on that? I entertain a motion to approve the hiring of Josh Malloy with a date, hiring date to be determined.
There he is.
Anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay.
I'll motion it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Mirevka, second by trustee Parker.
Caller, caller, the one that's just kind of coughing, can you mute yourself, please?
Okay, Mirevka.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Ham.
Yeah.
Bowden.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a sign variance from my office. I'm going to recuse, recuse myself and I would entertain a motion to have trustee Bowden be temporary chair for this item. And, and that motion would be for item B and for C1, correct? Correct.
Motion.
There, second.
Second.
And moved by, trusted, moved by trustee Ham, second by trustee Jones.
Who did you say?
Trustee Ham and trustee Jones.
No, no, that I got, but.
Oh, trustee Bowden is going to be the temporary chair.
Okay, Ham.
Yeah.
Jones.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to discuss the request from Dr. March's office for a signed variance for electronic sign. Dr. March, would you like to go through your proposal?
Sure, I can, Lino Corrali's on the line too, who's the, who's doing the sign. But basically, we're just replacing the sign that's out there. It's going to be about eight inches closer to the ground than the one is right now. The width is going to be the same, it's just a little better resolution.
So size-wise, it, it's fine, it's in compliance with the code. What the variance is for is that it's an electronic message board and those require, those are not allowed in the code, so those are, that would require variance.
Will you be using the same frame that's in there now?
Yes.
So it'll be similar to what Burcoff is going to be doing.
Yep, although smaller.
Don't you already have one?
Yes.
Okay. So, because you're replacing it, you have to have another variance?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so you're just upgrading your technology.
Yep.
Cool.
I think he, he put that in before the variance, the code was changed to require to have a variance. So he's coming into compliance.
Got it. Oh, okay.
All right, any further discussion on this?
Do you think this will be brighter than the existing sign or about the same?
About the same, yeah. It's just better resolution, so.
Yeah.
You know, you can put more pictures on it instead of just letters.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Are you approving the ordinance as well or are we going to give the ordinance as a separate motion?
I don't know, that's my.
Can we do, can we do those together, Michael? B and C, one.
Yep, yes, yes, you can.
If that be my desire.
That would be my desire. Do this as expeditiously as possible.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham. Bowden.
Yes.
All right, thank you, moving on, and that was ordinance 20-16, correct?
2016.
Moving on, an ordinance imposing a franchise fee on Aqua Illinois for the provision of water and sewer service within the village of Peatown. So in our agreement, when Aqua purchased the system, we were allowed to impose a 5% franchise fee. We've decided to do that along with 3% water utility tax to, and use those funds to shore up our police pension fund. So the franchise fee will be imposed on the cost of the water and sewer service. The next item, utility tax, will be imposed on the water only, and that'll be a 3%. Questions? No questions, and I'll entertain a motion, this would be ordinance 20-17, to impose a franchise fee on Aqua Illinois for water and sewer service within the village of Peatown.
So moved?
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Bowden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yeah.
Bowden. Oops, already.
Okay, item three then is ordinance adding a new section 121.1 water utility tax to chapter 121 municipal utility taxes of title 11 of Business Regulations of the Peatown Village Code regarding the imposition of a water utility tax. Again, this would be a 3% tax on the cost of the water provided by Aqua. Again, move this, using this to shore up our police pension fund. Any discussion?
How close will this bring us into compliance, do we know?
With our.
Where we need to be.
It'll probably, you know, help us, I mean, in total, it's going to be about $180,000 a year once the new Aqua rate's going to affect. So, you know, our, our obligations, the pension fund are, you know, between $500,000 and $600,000 a year now, so obviously, it's going to help quite a bit. Is there a motion? Motion.
Dr. March?
Yes.
Can I just point out, so the, the copy of the ordinance that circulated in the packet specified 3.09%, but after some back and forth with Aqua, after the packet went out, it was determined that it needed to be at 3%. So, so the one ultimately signed is going to be a flat 3%.
Correct, thank you. All right, so it's moved by trustee Bowden and seconded by trustee Jones.
Bowden.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yeah.
And that was ordinance 20-18. So next is an ordinance for the levy and assessing of the 2020 taxes for the village of Peatown, Will County, Illinois. So at the A O C meeting, Marcy was present to kind of explain this as best as she could to us. But basically, we need to do this every year to capture the property taxes that the county levies. And so, you know, there's some calculations and gymnastics to come up with a number to make sure that we get all the increased evaluations of property in the village. And so that's what this levy is. We have to send this to the county before the end of the month so that we can, you know, get the money that's coming due to us from people's property taxes.
They'll utilize it to create a rate for us and then they'll use it then to send out the tax extensions. They'll send out the bills based on this to collect the money.
Right, so we're, we're limited how much we can levy by the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which this year was 2.3, I believe, or 5%, whichever is lower. So we're actually levying at a rate of 1.05, so 5% over last year, even though we know we can only get 2.3%, but we want to make sure we capture everything we can. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the ordinance for a levy assessing of the 2020 taxes for the village of Peatown. And this will be resolution.
No, no, excuse the ordinance.
Oh, I mean, ordinance 20-19.
I'll motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by trustee Mirevka, second by trustee Sluse.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yeah.
Bowden.
Yes.
Okay, next is item D, a resolution. So this resolution allocates the levy that we just approved to individual funds in the village. And so this doesn't mean that that's the total amount of money that's going into those funds. You know, we get funds from sales tax and fees and all sorts of things, you know, and you'll see that in the budget. But we're required to allocate those funds to, you know, specific items, so this resolution is doing that. So, questions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve resolution 20-R10, allocating 2020 tax levy to individual funds for the village.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Mirevka.
Jones.
Yes.
Mirevka.
Yes.
Sluse.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yeah.
Bowden.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, item E, waive competitive bidding for construction of storm sewer infrastructure behind certain property on South Second Street. So this has been an ongoing issue over many years. We, you know, finally came up with a reasonable solution. Just to give you an update, the farm field behind those houses on Second Street collects water when it rains and there's a lot of subsurface water that goes into people's basements and they, you know, some pumps are constantly running. They pump it onto the street in the winter, there's ice always on that street and sidewalks, creates a dangerous situation. We had a tile company come and look at the property. They located a tile that is running up into the property lines of those houses, so it's clear at that point. But then, from that point on, it's blocked. They think it's either collapsed under those houses or collapsed, it goes under Second Street and then goes south under the easement on Second Street. They said it, it's kind of foolhardy to try to, try to correct that, to try to repair those tiles because you could repair 100 feet of tile and then another 100 yards away, it could be collapsed again down the road. So their solution was to tie the part that we know is running at the edge of that farm field and bring it north to the, the nearest storm sewer that we have runs on east-west on South Street. So to run it in the easements in front of the houses would be, they gave us, the engineering firm gave us a quote of about $200,000 to do that because we have to go through driveways and do a lot of repair. The other option is going through the farm field, laying a tile through there. We have to get an easement from Greg Clark who owns that and an easement from the property owner to the north right by Second Street. And I've talked to both property owners and they are very agreeable to doing that. And so the reason why we're waiving competitive bidding or proposing that is because to have competitive bidding, we would have to have engineering plans drawn up and, you know, go through the process of, you know, getting proposals. And it would, it would be more costly to have those engineering plans drawn up. Troy, our engineer, thinks it's very reasonable to just have a company come in and put the tile in. We know where the storm sewer is, we know where the tile is, they just have to connect the two. So by waiving competitive bidding, that doesn't mean we're just getting one bid and, and, you know. know, doing whatever that one person says, we're still going to try to get three bids on this project, and, and then we'll discuss when we get those bids, you know, which one we're going to go with. But we'd like to get this done as soon as possible, because the longer we wait, the more chance somebody's going to, you know, have an accident, or that, that road is getting chewed up by the ice constantly on there, so. So that's kind of where we're at, Troy, did you want to add anything to that?
That was a good summary of it, I talked to two contractors already on the phone today and last week, and, and they are, it sounds like they're planning on getting me something back this week, the third one I have not heard from back yet. The one, just so everyone knows, the, the hard part about it is the storm sewer we're connecting to is really deep in the ground, so that, that will be the only challenge, you know, how much disturbance there is in the, in the depth of the trench, but we'll have to wait and see what the proposals show from the contractors, to see how to, how to deal with that, what the cost will be.
So, you kind of estimated that you thought it would be closer to 50,000 or 60,000 rather than closer to 200,000 if we went in the front, right?
Right. It could come in a little bit higher than that, after talking to some contractors about the depth of it, so, but it's definitely cheaper than going in the street, because at that depth, all the, all the stuff you have to remodel or replace and put back.
And, I think I mentioned this last time, but the funds for this are going to be coming from a, so we used to have a, impact fees when new properties were built, one of the impact fees goes, went to a sewer fund, and we did get a legal opinion that we are able to use those funds for this, for storm sewer projects like this.
So, by waiving the competitive bidding, but you're saying we're getting competitive bidding, so what exactly, it's like contradicting itself.
Yeah, so, Mike, are you there, do you want to just kind of explain to, explain to us what we're doing here?
Sure, so, so when, when you go through the formal statutory bid process, like, like the mayor said, you would have these engineering plans, you would put out this detailed list of specifications, you're publishing, there's timetables, you know, questions back and forth that go to all the bidders, et cetera, and, and that's time consuming, so, the idea here is, is we're still meeting the intent of the bidding by going out to three different companies at least and getting these quotes, but we're not, we're not complying with the policies, and you're allowed to do that under state law, so long as it's approved by a few thirds of the trustees.
So they'll be bidding on the same criteria, but it's not an in-depth criteria, is it?
Correct, there's no formal engineering plans drawn up, there's no request for proposal, there's no publication of, you know, requesting bids, you know, we don't have to set, we don't have to set a date for bid opening, you know, that type of thing.
Will Troy work with them as far as the specifications?
Yeah, so you hear that, Troy, so you'll work with them as far as the specifications, what we need to have done there, right?
Yes, I sent them all an email with an exhibit I put together and a text description of what the village is looking for, so two of them have followed up the phone calls for me to ask further questions, so I, I gave them all the same thing initially, what they're going to be asking questions, and, and they're all going to kind of give me their individual proposals, some might have options, so, once we get all the proposals back, we'll have to kind of sort through them and see, you know, what options they included, and, you know, and the costs, obviously. So I'll, I'll be working with them and, you know, for any other questions, what, what the specifications.
So we don't already have some picked out and just?
Right.
How confident are we?
Page, page number? What, what size tile is this?
I'm sorry, oh, what size of tile will we be putting in?
Yeah, like farm tiles usually are four inches, six inches, eight inches, 10 inches, what, what are you guys running?
This will be a 12-inch storm sewer to connect.
Oh, that's quite, that's big, that's very big.
Yeah, so.
I'm pretty familiar with the type of work in the ag industry, and I would comment to the group that soil conditions are really, really good for this type of work, so it probably makes sense to just get it moving ASAP.
Good. Mike, you have a question?
How confident are we that this will eradicate the problem?
Did you hear that, Troy?
Yeah, I did. Obviously, no formal engineering study was done, but we, we looked at it, our drainage engineer looked at it, you know, based on what we got, the information we got from the tile survey, and how we're able to pick that up and connect to a three-foot diameter large storm sewer, we're, we're very confident that this will get the water out of that farm field, and, you know, this trowel should be sized sufficiently to pick up the water there and move it to the north, to the storm sewer. The other part of this would be to plug that existing drain tile that goes east, so it won't go to those houses on Second Street, so it'll be blocked off, they're going to only go north.
So obviously, there's no guarantees, no matter how much engineering you do, but this is going to take, you know, a lot of the water pressure off of those, you know, if there's a 100-year storm, I'm sure they're still going to get surface water come that way, it's just the way the lay of that land is, but.
That's a little odd.
Yeah, it's going to eliminate 95% of the subsurface water that they're getting. Hey Bob, are you on?
He's still, it still looks like he's.
Still logged in? Bob? No, phone's ringing.
He ran away.
Are you there, Bob?
Yes, yes.
So this water, has it been causing damage to the road in that area?
It has over the years, yes.
So this'll, this'll fix that road and prevent ice dams and whatever else you've been dealing with?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thanks. All right, any other questions? So, if we approve this, then we'll still bring this back to the board for the final approval when we get the, you know, the prices, quotes, okay?
So we're going to have two or three quotes on it?
Right. All right. Entertain a motion to waive competitive bidding for construction of storm sewer infrastructure at Second Street.
I'll motion it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Ham. Morevka?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Bowden?
Yes.
All right, item F of our, a lot of times a second meeting in December is, we cancel because it, you know, falls too close to the holiday, this one falls a few days after Christmas. The challenge will be, if we do have an agenda, it'll probably have to come out the Tuesday before, right, because Thursday you guys are off, because that's Christmas Eve, right? And then I'm going to be gone. So somebody will have to take minutes. So, unless, I guess the only item that we might have is the storm sewer thing, if we get these quotes back, I'd really like to get that going, so just kind of, you know, keep the date open, if we don't have anything urgent, we'll cancel it, but like I said, if we have this bidding, if we have something, I still think we might just have a meeting just to approve that.
How many, oh, I want to tell this, how many people do we need to have a quorum to have that?
Four, right, Mike?
Yeah, you, you need four trustees and you need all four voting in favor of it.
Oh, if we wait, even after we waive competitive bidding, you said? So we need two?
Right, so when you waive competitive bidding, it's a super majority, the mayor can vote, and it's got to be four of the six sitting trustees voting in favor.
Okay, the mayor cannot vote, you said?
Correct, because the statute specifies only trustees.
Okay. So.
So is it, is it a question of who is going to be attending versus who's not going to be attending? Can you canvass to see?
Well, yeah, I mean, so is everybody available that date?
Yeah.
Are you good, Ken and Julie?
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, so, like I said, if, if we don't have anything urgent, we'll probably cancel it, but if we have something that is time sensitive, we will hold that, so. Questions, are the press at all, anything, Chris?
Yeah, did you say that the franchise fee was a flat 3% on both water and sewer?
It's 5%.
5% on both water and sewer?
Right, and the utility tax is 3% just on water.
Oh, I see, so five on water and sewer, and then an additional three on water?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, I've got a couple items, first of all, I want to give condolences to Marv Rathard's family, Marv was a longtime police officer, resident of Peatone, I want to thank the chief and the police department for their memorial procession and help with the funeral last Friday. Also, last Friday, we had a great kickoff meeting with Upland Design on the historic downtown Peatone, the board, I want you to participate, and the next meeting will be a virtual meeting on Tuesday, January 12th, Amy will send invites out for that, and then we'll, we'll be having a stakeholder virtual meeting on Thursday, January 21st at 6:00 PM, that's going to, we're going to invite a lot of business owners, not only downtown, but, you know, chamber members of, through the village, and I've got a whole list of people that I want to give input on that. The engineering design for the I-57 interchange has been submitted to IDOT, so that's, was a big project that Troy took on, and, so now, we're just kind of waiting for the back and forth with IDOT to see, you know, what, what we have to do to get that approved. Amy has been gathering quotes for new flooring for the village hall, you know, the carpet here has outlived its useful life, so we will be running those by you when we get them. Filing period for municipal election runs from today through next Monday, so if you're running, I encourage you to get your petitions in. I wanted to thank the Christmas in the village committee, Public Works and Police for putting on a great event last Saturday, the, the static parade went off very well, almost 500 cars went by, and probably 1,500, 2,000 people went by, so, it was a great event for the village, and also, there's a lot of great holiday lighting on residents' homes, so if you haven't driven around town, do yourself a favor and do that before Christmas. Anything else from the board at all?
One quick question, in the engineering study for the I-57, did that include, like, stoplights and signal lights or anything?
Now, Troy, did you hear that question? Is he there?
No, I think he.
Oh, Troy's out. So it did not include stoplights, it includes mostly widening the road, creating turn lights.
Do we, should we get anything underway as soon as possible, so?
For stoplights in the future?
Yeah, signal lights and turning and sooner rather than later, so it would all kind of dovetail together and.
Yeah, I, I still think, what's the word, the traffic warrants don't.
Warrants, we don't need warrants for a traffic light.
We don't need the, so I don't think you can start the process until the traffic warrants set. It's kind of silly, but I think that's.
Be nice to have everything plugged in so we can.
Let me, I'll talk to Troy about that, see him next.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Kind of going back to the town, the downtown area makeover.
Yes.
I know, we're going with the one people, did we ever do a bid for that, like, did we have to bid out that business at all, did we do that, or did we discuss that in one of our?
Not really, I mean, we, we got, we got a few, we contacted four firms and got two bids from that, and we just took the low bid on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't, again, we didn't do an RFP or anything like that. We do have a public works committee coming up, right? Is there?
21st?
Right.
And then there's also a police committee coming up this week, this Thursday?
On the 17th.
Yeah, anything else?
No.
If not, happy holidays to everybody, stay safe, wear a mask, get a vaccine when it's available, and entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll motion it.
Been moved by trustee Morevka, second by trustee Jones.
Morevka?
Yes.
Jones?
Yep.
Sluse?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Ham?
Yeah.
Bowden?
Yes.
Great, thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Of course, because that's my grandmother's home, it's all different.
Who's caller seven, why the hell didn't they turn their damn microphone on?
Yeah.
What's that?